Okay.
We will call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of Sturman Utilities. It's September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Agenda items one, two, three, and four, call order, roll call, agenda approval, and consent agenda. You've had a chance to look at the bills and feel like you're ready to make a motion or entertain a motion.
Make a motion?
Moved by Craig.
Sorry.
Seconded by Brian. How do you vote, Kim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Okay, item number five is Tri-Center Association.
He's not here. Okay, he's proposing the annual contribution that we get to the Tri-Center. He came to the council and the council about one thousand dollars. Usually we get five hundred dollars out of the council, double it to one thousand dollars.
I don't know, but what was implied to them. They are, they're kind of in a pinch.
Yes.
Because they, they got their funding pulled out when they come, so.
John, what funding are you referring to? What other funding?
They have, they're funded through an elder bridge agency on aging.
Okay.
Apparently the budget cuts, they've been cut due to funding cuts from both the state and the federal. So, and it was a considerable cut as far as I'm from what I understand, so. I guess, you know, if the council gave a thousand dollars, I don't know why we couldn't either. I think it's appropriate for us to do that, so.
I'll make the motion if we give them a power.
One second.
Motion by Kim, seconded by Brian. How do you vote, Brian?
Yeah.
I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Kim?
Yes.
Can we also put that explanation that you shared in the minutes? So that's.
Oh, sure.
Public information.
Item number six, A, senior associates pay application for the Caldwell tanks for our water tower. This is a pay application. I think you have that information.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Shirley. How do you vote? I, Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And six B is a pay application for Great Plains, which is our water main project. A pay application for that is around.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shirley.
I'll second.
Seconded by Craig. How do you vote, Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote aye. And Jeff, I think, hopefully you've got a report for us.
Yeah, I've got a little update for you. Both projects are getting close to the end. It's kind of nice to see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'll just do a little quick recap. I made myself some notes. You just approved pay application nine on the water tower for twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. That leaves a total of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars left to pay, and a good share of that is your retainage, which we don't pay until the end. And so the things that are left to do are final electrical and controls, driveway paving, site grading, and granular surfacing for some parking area there, and then the final cleanup, of course. And so that project is ninety-five, a little over ninety-five percent complete by the dollars percentages, and they've only used about eighty-three percent of their performance time. So they're ahead of schedule, and we should have no trouble getting that done yet this fall. The only unknown is those controls. There's quite a few projects we've had where, you know, they'll have the entire control box ready to go, and they're missing three little pieces that go in there because of the supply chain issues. So I haven't heard that that's an issue here. They've installed fairly soon here, so. But the tower has been disinfected. It has water in it. We'll talk a little bit more about that here in a little bit at the end, at the end of my report. As far as the water mains go, pay application twelve was for one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-two cents. That leaves five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents remaining. They're pretty much done installing water mains. I don't believe they're all pressure tested yet, but close to that. And then as they pressure test them, they disinfect them, and then they can start connecting services to those mains. And the service installation is going along quite well. They have three hundred and sixty-eight out of four hundred and sixty-nine service connections completed, so about a hundred, just over a hundred service connections left to go. They still have quite a bit of pavement patching and seeding and cleanup to do, but they are hoping to be out of here by early October. So, you know, see how the weather treats them. If it's too rainy or anything, I might sew them down a week or two, but we could use some rain. I'm not going to complain about rain. So the thing that we did discover, and I'm sure you've heard about it, Ben called me one day about a week or so, when they were filling that new tower and the old tower was overflowing and the new one wasn't quite full yet, and we did some digging and talking, and we figured out that somehow there was communication error, and the elevation of the new tower is a little higher than it was intended to be. The good news is that that gives you growing room for the future with pressure, because down by the interstate, you're a little light on your pressure anyway, and this would add about six or seven PSI to your system at some point in time. Now, there's some different ways we can get there. First option that Ben and Pat and I have talked about for the short term is just to let it work how it is. And so the new, the old tower would still work at its normal full level. The new tower would be a little bit under half full, and they'd work together. You'd have two hundred and sixty-four thousand gallons of water in the air, which is about one point three, one point four days of water. And so that's a good place to be. You're over your day. You know, we don't like to be much under a day, and that's where your old tower by itself was under a day. So, so we're getting over that day, let them work together, and just kind of wait until your growth demands a little bit more, and then there's some things we can do to make full use of both towers, and I'm going to get to that. The other thing that you could do for the short term, if you wanted to, you could simply shut the valve at the old tower, don't even use it, use the new tower at its full capacity, and that would give you two hundred and fifty thousand in the air versus two sixty-four if they're working together. So that's still, it's over a day's capacity, you know, it's, it's going to serve you quite well for several years until your growth gets past that point. The, the other option, third option, I guess, to say, we could put an altitude valve in a pit at the base of the existing tower. We don't have cost estimates on this yet because we wanted to get your opinion about exactly what option you wanted us to pursue. But what that would consist of is just basically a pressure valve that would regulate so the new tower could operate at its full capacity, the existing tower would also operate at its full capacity, albeit lower, but that altitude valve at the base of the tower in a pit would control that so it doesn't overflow. Both towers would work together. Your whole system would have four hundred thousand gallons of water in the air. Obviously, there's a little cost involved to put that in, but I can't tell you what that number is. We haven't gotten that far. And then there is a fourth option, which Pat and Ben, and I agree, is probably not the best option, but I wanted to make sure you knew it was there, and that is to divide the town into two separate pressure zones. And so you've got two lines that go under your railroad tracks, and that's the only two places that the north and south connect. And what we would need to do is put a control valve on both of those lines, and that could keep the pressure separate from the north to the south. The existing tower would pretty much serve the north half of town. The new tower would serve the south half of town. They could work together when they have to, and, and then you would have slightly higher pressure on the south side of the tracks. There are some disadvantages to that, too. It's a little bit more equipment. There's maintenance on that equipment, so that's really not a preferred option, but it is an option that exists. So that's really my outline of what I know, and I'm happy to take any questions you have about that.
Organize.
Well, I was just wondering how it happened that.
Yeah.
We are at only a half capacity when we were purchasing a.
I understand, I understand. And so if you remember, I think I talked about this at bid time, USDA, let me back up half a step. The original concept was to match the overflows on the two towers so they would be the same. And the new tower has six more feet of operating range than the old tower, and the USDA engineer asked us to, to line up the bottom side of the tower instead of the top because of your pressure issues on the south end of town. And so that was done in the plans, and that was what was intended when we bid. And then when we add a little bit more on this elevation error, whatever you want to call it, I mean, it's not what it was thought to be, because we had a bad number on the overflow here, and then that makes us a total of fourteen feet off, six plus eight. So that's about six or seven PSI with gravity. It's also half the volume of your tower, or a little over half, actually, so. I mean, that is what it is. We can't change that. What we can do is find ways to make them work together. So I think the silver lining for the future, you know, at some point, this tower is going to outlive its life. If you make a choice in twenty or thirty or forty years to replace it, you can build that tower to match this one, and the whole town will have six or seven PSI better pressure than it would have. That's a good thing. Doesn't mean that this is not something that we should take seriously, because we should. You know, it's just a matter of now which option fits you the best for the next, for the present and for the future. And so if you choose one of the two options, that basically, we don't have to do anything. We just let them work where they are, and then as you grow, make a decision on options three or four on this list, or maybe even another option that we haven't found yet. That's really, you know, kind of what we need to look towards. It's what, which path do we want to take?
Jeff, Jeff, this is Brian. I'm sorry. I'm not understanding the, the design errors. You could explain that again?
Well, we had conversations about what the elevation of the overflow of this existing tower is, and I, you know, Pat and Ben and I have looked through our notes. We've looked through our, our communications. I believe it was probably in a phone call where the final mistake happened, to be honest. And, and the number that we put down in our spreadsheet and the number that actually exists in real life were different. And so the elevation of the existing tower actually truly is thirteen hundred and twenty-seven, and the number we had down was thirteen point zero. And so it was eight point two feet higher. How did that happen? You know, I would add a crystal ball because I can't remember.
That's fine. I understand that. So what I'm, and again, I'm not, I didn't hear Shirley's question, but it was addressing that or the storage level?
I was just commenting that if our capacity was a certain amount on the new tower, then I used to ask why.
Right.
And I was just wondering what Ben thought about even the extra maintenance? Or will there be a lot more to, for checking?
Well, we talked about this, and like Jeff said, being that this is where we're at, and our two most reasonable options, we've talked it over, and we feel the most reasonable option for right now is to live, just let them both work the way they're working. We are not getting the capacity that we had planned on getting. That's just the fact of it. It is enough capacity now for us to get by and will serve us, like Jeff said, could potentially serve us for ten years or more at this level. It's just not what we planned on. If, because there's going to be additional costs, if we want to fill both these towers up to their full capacity, it probably isn't worth, in our opinion, probably not worth it at this time. If we needed this capacity right now, you know, we built this tank because we were thinking forward in the future.
Sure.
At some point in time, we would probably be doing the options we've talked about where we add probably an altitude valve at this tower.
And so what would, what would the cost of that be?
Well, that's where we, we can do a little bit more research and get that. We just, we've only had a week here, and we've reached out to a couple vendors to make sure that they think it's a feasible option, but we have not taken enough time yet to really lock down an estimate. So I really hate to even guess, but if you want us to get that number and get it back to you, we certainly will.
Yeah, what would be a swag guess? Are you talking fifty thousand or five hundred thousand?
No, I think the first number is a swag guess for an altitude valve.
Okay.
All right. I think if we wanted to do two pressure zones in town, that would be significantly more.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the details.
I guess the one thing, you know, I don't want to throw a cold, wet blanket on all of this, but, you know, I think it's important that we understand, and we get it in the minutes, that we're not getting what we paid for.
Long-term, you will get what you paid for. Right now, it's not the way it was intended.
Okay, so Pat, where are you at with this?
As far as the options?
Yeah.
I think we live with what we got for now, and when we need to go to something else like a valve so that we can actually fill this tank to its capacity, we worry about it then, because we're probably going to get by for a good ten years just the way it is. But we, like was said, we were planning, trying to plan ahead further than that, but that's all the further this is probably going to get us.
So I guess I'll just be, is this an engineering error?
It's an, it's an error of an elevation number, and all the engineering off of that number was done correctly, but the fact is, we had a bad number in the, in our, in our system.
But that, what I'm asking is who's accountable for that? That's what I guess I'm getting at.
I understand, and I don't, I say that. I don't, I can't, I don't have authority to say that. That's a decision for someone way above me.
Well, whose system are we referring to?
The spreadsheet that designs everything. I mean, you know, all the calculations.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking. Is it your system? Is it your assigned spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so then you're, then you own that information, I guess, unless I'm misunderstanding something. So why would that fall back on the Stewart Utilities being an error that we would push us down the road? Is this something that you should be accountable for based on a contract that we've signed and the money that the utility customers have paid? I guess I'm asking that question to be blunt.
Right, and I, I'm telling you, I cannot answer that, but I do have someone. My boss is here with me tonight, just in case we needed to talk more. I'll let him address that question at this time.
Sure, thanks. My name is Dave Stern. I do manage our Atlantic office, and in my conversations with Jeff, we can't find written documentation of how this elevation was established. We believe it was through phone conversations with the Stewart Utilities and with Jeff as well. And in, in those conversations, the elevation was determined, and it apparently was determined to be eight point two feet off. So the liability in there is, hopefully, it's a, it's a combination thing. It's an unfortunate thing, is what it is. So as Jeff mentioned, in the long run, if you guys ever do build, rebuild your other tower, you could build it eight feet higher and have better pressure in your entire system, including the areas north, south side of town where you have low pressures now. So I guess we would have.
Yeah, that's, to me, I guess what I'm hearing is not a solution. It's additional cost to our utility customers, so I don't think that this, that is a viable solution.
The, the solution they want to go with right now is operate them as is, which would not be any more cost, and if you can get ten, fifteen, twenty years out of it, you know, by then, you're, you might be looking at the other tower as well. That's always an option in the future.
Yeah, but we're, again, that's an excuse, and we're kicking the can down the road versus addressing what the utility customers have paid for.
Yes.
That's how I understand this, is we hired you to design and implement what the utility customers were paying for and what the board had planned for for several years before, and what I'm hearing is we didn't get what we paid for.
Right, you, you would not. That new tower all the way without overflowing the old one, and the option to do that right now?
And to me, we should get what we paid for. If you go buy a new car, you, you get air conditioning, a leather interior, and you only get air conditioning, that's not the customer's fault.
Yep, where we would have, we would have to talk about that with the group and try to find any sort of documentation. As I mentioned, we could, we think it was through a phone call, is we didn't have a written email that we could find where the elevation was given. We think it's just, it happened.
That's negligence on your part, how I view that. That's just myself as a board member. So, I mean, that you guys own the design and implementation, and the utility board owns the expense of the utility customers of repayment for those services that we're not getting. Unless I'm misunderstanding the, the information that's being explained right now. And this was the largest ever expense in infrastructure project that the board has ever taken for the, for the utility customer. So, I mean, to find an error of this level is, is, you know, frustrating.
Agreed. We are very frustrated by it.
And I think I, I agree with Brian here. I think we need to research what we, what we need to do to make this system what the utility customer paid for. And, you know, it, it's going to cause some, it's going to cause some irritation on everybody's part, but we need to get to the bottom of this. And I don't think we need to talk about paying any more than what we already paid for the system. So that's where I'm coming from here.
So Ash, can we get some more, and Pat, can we get some more information on this between now and the next utility we're meeting, and see where this gathered? Again, when, when we're hiring a, a third party to design and implement, it's because we need to go outside of our own house to do that, and figure out where that happened, and figure out what we need to do to get what we paid for, I guess.
I suppose, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will do some more research on that for sure. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, we'll talk to you again. Absolutely.
All right. Okay, next item is Wombo Phase Three Participation. This is something, and I don't know if we need to take a vote on this, you know, at least, I don't think we're required to take a vote.
And I had to make that, but the city at one meeting bring up about what payments we still had on the other two phases that we're still paying on, and I just didn't know where that was at.
Yeah, I think we provided, and I can give you a copy.
Do you remember what we still owed on those? Do you just ballpark?
Yeah, we have a few years left, you know, on that Wombo.
And those are all TIF participations, right?
Yes, the two were the big names. I can get you the, I have to just go back to my office.
Well, I can voice my opinion on it. I, I figure, I think I heard our mayor say once that he had arranged for payment or funding, and it covered everything that he is asking, even if we participated. He has it covered. And I think we've been, we've done well to help him out in the other two phases. I'm not, I'm just not.
My problem is our budget.
We've had two big projects, and we're still.
And how many are we going to be having coming up?
Right.
Electric project possibly coming up.
Yes.
I'm not saying that it's not a good thing. I mean, it looks great out there, and I, I like that the city is forward-thinking and we're getting new housing, but that's just my two cents.
I don't feel like we can afford it right now. That's my opinion.
And, and I was the one who asked to have this put on the, put on the agenda. I, I go back and forth issue of us participating in TIF. Now, I will tell you that it's not difficult for anyone to see the value that TIF has, has had for the city of Stewart. You know, the, the things that, that they've done have been beneficial to the city. The, where, where I begin to have some question about this is that we, we can't participate in TIF because our revenue comes from revenue and not from taxes, and that's a tax increment financing program. So if we chose to, to use TIF on a, on a project of ours, which this water project is coming from TIF, we have to agree to pay a certain amount back to the city each and every year. And we've done that. This building is here because of that arrangement. The first part of the Wombo is part of that, and the All Saints Edition is part of that. And those are not, those are not bad programs, and I think this billing is about done, isn't it, Ash?
Yes, yes.
But I guess, I guess where I'm coming from here is that we need to, at least I remind myself all the time that we are trustees, and we are trustees of the revenue of the utility company. And every time that we enter one of these TIF agreements with the city, the money for us to repay that comes out of our general fund. And I think the, the thing that startled me when we were considering doing this water project with TIF funds, would have required us to make a payment of, of over two hundred thousand dollars a year back to the city. And that's fine for the city, but what happens to us if we start, begin to have budget problems? And, and, you know, we can't do what we're required to do for the customers of the utility company.
But John, that's not accurate, because the payments are made on an annual appropriation basis, so you could opt in one year, opt out another. So, I mean, it wasn't a TIF obligation to the utilities.
But the amount, the amount still remains. If we opt out one year, that just adds on to how much longer we have to pay for.
Yeah, and that's not accurate, because the bond cash flow was based off the utility cash flow money, not the TIF revenue.
Well, I guess what, what I'm thinking about is that, to make it, to make it simple, is that in the future, we set a limit as to how much in a year we allocate toward TIF, whether we get there or not. We set a thousand, you can set it higher, but set an amount that, you know, when we begin to plan to do a TIF project, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, because there's times when it's beneficial for us to do that, but that we also have to think that we are trustees and we're responsible for the, for the revenue of the utility company.
Yeah, and, and that, we talked about leaving this for the budget process, and so what you're talking about makes sense to look at that contribution relative to all the other contributions that are being, are already obligated, to see whether we can even deal with that, because it goes against rate increases. So I understand your, your point.
And we've been, this will be a second year in a row that they're going to raise us twelve percent, and we're only going to pass on three unless they can change that, but that, how many years that going to happen to us? I mean, that's a big deal, and it's hard to explain to customers when they even.
Yeah.
We have time to make the decision about participation.
But I would like board members to think about that, that hundred thousand, that when we decide to do this, if we decide to do this. that we also include with that a resolution that would limit the amount that we would be, that we would be able to allocate.
So are you saying that we ought to set aside so much every year, no?
No, no.
To our.
If we get into a TIP project with the city, that limit, and if that limit, if what we are going to end up paying back to the city in total goes over $100,000, we can't, we can't do that project because it will be over that threshold.
So, so the city has what's called a financial framework, surely. It sets a boundary for tax rates and a boundary for reserves. And Ash, jump in if this has changed, but it's meant to try to not raise taxes above a certain level unless the city administrator recommends it. And so maybe somewhat similar there is what John may be getting at is if there are percentage or a dollar amount that is reasonable, that's, you know, is looked at overall, right? You add up all of these things and if it goes over that, it doesn't look affordable. And if we're within that because something else falls off like the city hall building, then it is feasible. Versus just a one-off.
I think that's what John's proposing. I think he's proposing $100,000. And I think that's very generous because right now the total package that we gave to the city alone, 60 to 65,000. So, I think, like I said, we have time for all that to discuss and I don't want the board to feel like under pressure to make a decision, saying John added to the
I thought he added.
Agenda because he wants you to just discuss it so you'll be aware of. I think he's proposing $100,000 to Ash.
Yeah, and Ash, you can look at those units here, can look at those numbers if that's.
Yeah, we can, I think it would be good to discuss these numbers during the budget session because you ask me now, see, that's very generous. It's going to concern $100,000.
And where it comes from. Ash has been with me when we've been in deficit in our water fund. And the reason it was, was because of an extraordinary amount of off-budget things. We had water line breaks. We had all kinds of stuff happening. We had to, when we built this building, we had to tear down the old city hall. We found a, an old oil tank. They used to burn oil in it for heat. That oil tank had been buried under the, underground for god only have many years. That all had to be cleaned out. The dirt had to be hauled out of there. It was all contaminated. I think that was $60,000 just to do that off-budget. And, you know, I don't want to get caught in a situation like that when we're in the middle of paying the city back, you know, a large amount of money and we've got problems of our own that we're, we're trying to solve. So that's where, where I'm coming from. I'm just, I don't want to get caught in that situation again. So I think it's wise if we, I think it's wise if we limit that amount of contribution that we give back to the city every year. So. And Ash and Sarah can look at the numbers and make a recommendation, Ash, if you need to.
Sure, yes. And I will work with Brian too on this number and his proposal that we had in the joint meeting of trying to seek some, what I call it, advice, or you can put it in any way you want. It was some outsider at all. We discussed that today.
And I don't, I don't want anybody to get the idea that the, the projects that we've done with the city that included TIP have been bad ones. The building we're sitting in is part of that. So there are times when it's going to be beneficial for us to do that and to make, and to make those commitments to the city.
Yes.
But I think we need to be very careful how much we do that every, every year. And it's been, it's been $60,000 now for several years, hasn't it?
Yes, yes. 60 to 65, that's the total package of the participation with the city hall and Wombo and all that stuff.
So I don't want to say we completely shut that off, but we need to be very, because that's revenue that comes from our general fund directly into the city. So, and that's what I'm saying. We need to be very careful about that. So.
Nothing wrong with that. I will work together and I will include Brian in our financial work. He's good with numbers. Hopefully we'll be able to discuss all these issues more when we get close to the budget session. Pat will be involved too. It's his budget. So all this combination of the last two will be working.
Okay? All right, very good. We'll move on. Item number eight, Resolution 23-02, Change the Income Offset Program. So, is this just a renewal, Sarah?
Oh, it's a little different. It's a restructuring that the state has done. So we've been dealing with the Department of Administrative Services for the offset program. Now we're going to deal with Iowa Department of Revenue for the set off program. So whatever you call it, I'll know what you mean. But it's been a really good program for us to go after
Really is.
delinquent debts. So if this is just one of those formalities that we need to accept them or any of the other.
So they're just changing, they're just changing agencies. This is part of the governor's thing about.
Yeah, just stay with them.
Well, this offset program has been marvelous because I remember coming to Portuguese and maybe you do too Shirley, where that, where this thing is, was at least twice as thick as this, you know? And a lot of that's due to the offset program.
What I never did understand about that offset program was that because they're liable for the cost of their electricity, they can walk out on us because they've already got their deposit back. The offset program doesn't allow you to get the social security numbers. So you can go after them. And how you get it, I don't know, but that's, they, some people do put them down. And we didn't pressure them to put it down, but that's the only way you collect it. Is that still correct, Sarah?
Yeah.
Well, that's the way it worked before and they're still doing training at the state level on this program. I imagine there'll be a few bumps. The way that we pass the information to them is going to change a little bit. But I would imagine that that's still going to be accurate and we have been insistent we have to have that information to sign someone up for utilities.
Okay. So we need a motion for that. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, motion.
Moved by Shirley. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Craig. How do you vote? Brian? Are you there, Brian?
Yeah, sorry. Yes.
I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Kim?
Yes.
And item number nine is Lanko Health Insurance Increase. Here we go.
I'll let you. When we get that A V A.
Actually, we did not have one last year.
Yeah. See, she's, but then we can talk about it.
It's, it's, you know, everything gets more expensive. Health insurance gets more expensive. We still have the best deal that I've ever heard compared with everyone else, even with this minor increase.
Yes.
What is the minor increase?
The increase, we put it in a simple calculation on this thing you have in the back. You know, the current one, we pay lump sum for everybody, $1,583.40 a month. That's a current one. Within the city, 1383 will go to 1604. The increase is $57.42 per employee a month. It's not bad, but it's.
What is that percentage, Ash? Is that five to seven percent?
Yeah, they're close, yeah. Good to have you, bud.
I just, I couldn't hear.
I had to remember the counter to do that, but you got it right away. Yep, you're right. Yeah.
Is there concerns of that budget or not in your, in your cash flow budget?
I usually vote four percent of the outbacking by one percent. Yes.
And that's usual. A lot of times it's a roll of the dice when we, when we negotiate. You know, a lot of times we're, I think in the last negotiation, we did a two-year contract. And we've been three, two or three year, and we try to take those contracts, I think. And I think we certainly like a two. This is when you kind of roll the dice, is when this increase for health insurance comes in. But Sarah is right. It is, it is a Cadillac program. It extends not only to our, our union employees, but to our city employees as well. So.
And they didn't increase last year. So if we go in a budget, why is Brian last year was sort of poor and it didn't happen? So if I take it over to this year, I would be outnumbering them. So, but that's numbers that you and I almost like to go back and forth on, but. Yes, it is reasonable this year considering that they didn't increase last year.
Got it. Is that something, is that something that the council, the current council, you know, there's some new folks, is that something that they would be aware of or benefit from also being reminded that the insurance coverage because it's unionized also benefits the same side as well?
I tried to bring that up and I know nobody likes to hear that, but yes.
That's just bad. I'm not saying throw it your face type way. I'm just saying it's nothing bad to,
Yes.
You know, there's benefits of working, I don't get that.
We will never get that kind of insurance without the union increase. So yes, and to the union employees. And good thing we are on here now. So everybody's hearing us. We cannot do it without the union employees. So yes, I'm repeating myself. And they sit here, thank you, so it's good feelings between each other. If we're okay with the increase, will we have a motion?
Do I hear a motion to increase the Lanko Health Insurance?
Oh, I can.
I'll second it.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Kim. How do you vote? I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next item here is City Administrator Reports.
Yeah, I'd like to go through very quick. We start with the financial report and we have 7.3 million at the rank. The next we, page is the income date. Well, our finance is and shows different through the beginning balance of July 1st, balance of August, we are at a loss of 805,000. That's with considering those logistics that we keep paying those payments. If I take the logic out, the number will be plus 220,000. Page three, we still was on our budget. We have a heavy budget. We spend 1.5. So we're good with the budget. The page four is what happened in the month of August only, the beginning of August to the end of August. We show that's with the project. Without the project, it's a plus number of 199,000. Next report is a breakdown of the budget for your information. We go into the heavy report, which is the Lanko account. We have on the first page, two people on the Lanko account without saying name and we have a check mark to that right. That take us to the end of the report to page three. And then the next report is the Lanko account, page four. We have no change. And that take us all the way to page four. The next report is the payment agreement. We have three people we added as a new customer on our payment agreement. The next report, page in four payment agreement, we added three people. It will be shown on page one with a check mark on the right hand. And page four, two people with a check mark on the right hand. That take us all the way to page seven to end that report. Next report is budget billing, no change. We go to after that is a receivable backup, no change. The last report is the offset of the run and how much we collected up to the end. And that excludes the report.
Okay, other forum. Yeah?
If you all remember, I had last lived, Bruce News was here from Iowa Area Development. And we were talking about Carl Chevrolet in their addition and they were wanting basically us to back them so they could get a loan. And we kind of decided that if SIPCO would do it, we would let them do it. Well, I just got a notice yesterday. They presented it to SIPCO and SIPCO is going to take it on. They're going to sort it. So.
That's great news.
That's, that's good news.
Yeah.
The other item I want to bring up is back in August when we had our little heat wave, we set a whole, an all-new peak here on our electrical. Our old peak was 3.6 megawatts. And we got up to 3.87. Doesn't sound like a lot. That's a lot because we're talking, we're talking megawatts, not kilowatts. So it went up a lot. And if you're curious, what our two cat generators will generate, about 4.1, 4.2. So if we keep climbing like that, now, it wasn't like 3.6 was last year and 3.8 was issue. No, 3.6 was a few years ago. But I don't, it's never going to go down.
No.
It's only going to climb. So we are approaching the capacity on our generation.
Okay, let's, let's kick this around a little bit. Cost of a cat generator like that in the past was what, about a million and a half?
Yeah, that's a lot now.
Yeah? What would happen if we, if we keep increased generation through another wind turbine?
I see that's, I think you can, but I don't know.
How much would it increase? Would it increase enough?
It wouldn't increase enough. It wouldn't. And after talk, we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with SIPCO here a while back. And there we brought up the fact, we still have our own generators. Well, they don't meet the emissions standard anymore and they don't want us to run them.
But could we do it, could we run those on an emergency basis?
No.
Because of the emission to.
If we got word from MISO, and that is the federal government and they oversee SIPCO and then SIPCO hand, or they oversee SIPCO, they oversee Alliance and then we get all that handed out and they say, you know, it's 105 degrees out, we need you to run. They will not let us run those because they do not meet the current standards for emissions.
Because you used to be able to do them on an emergency basis.
Yeah, they won't let us do it now if MISO is involved.
So SIPCO, I'm sorry, I'm just going to, I'm just asking this question. SIPCO is telling us we can't run our own generators, but we buy energy from SIPCO, right?
Well, it's not SIPCO telling us that, it's MISO. And MISO.
What's that?
It's a federal, it's a federal government, not SIPCO.
It's not SIPCO telling us that, it's MISO. And that is basically SIPCO's boss that they have to go by whatever standard they say.
So do we, is there a cost to upgrade them?
The last I heard, the last, I, when I checked into it years ago, we're looking at a half a million dollars to upgrade them. If we're going to spend a half a million dollars, we might as well put that toward a new generator. That will already be, it'll, it'll already meet the standards.
But then what's the point of doing anything with our existing generators, right?
Yeah. Well, the plan was to get rid of them originally.
Because they're not, they're not worth anything here.
When we hit, when we, when we hit peak right now, this new peak, these generators, these old generators they, we have, they themselves will not carry that peak.
So, so I guess back to John's point, at what point does the contribution from wind turbine, uh, energy meet that or, or provide a break even or a benefit to utility customers to offset, you know, the gaps we're talking? Is it one turbine? Is it two turbines? Is it not cost effective, I guess? But I, I like his, I like that point. Could at least understand it.
It would take more than one turbine to match what a generator is going to put out. Now, to get into the specifics of it, we would have to have somebody that knows way more about it explain it to us, but one.
Sure. There are engineers out there who will do that. And there are engineers out there who will do those kinds of wind.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. And that's kind of what we talked about at that joint meeting, is trying to see if this guy can, you know, or knows the people to be able to, you know, share that with us, to find out what the cost would be to, you know, do a review of that.
But a, you know, another generator would probably cost at least as, as much as one more wind turbine, you know?
Right.
There's a maintenance though for a turbine compared to what it is to the generator.
Yeah, that's another point.
There's a lot more maintenance on the wind turbine.
But didn't you say the cost benefit from having that turbine has been, you know, many times fold the benefit of doing it versus not over the life of it?
Well, it has. But if you, that's because it runs every day though. And it's got a 20-year life on it and then you got to start doing something with it to upgrade it. With the generators that we currently have, I mean, the oldest one is approaching 20 years old and it's still got a lot of life.
Is there room in that lot out there to put one?
I believe there is. And probably we might add onto a building or something, but there's room in that lot to put one if we wanted to. That's the way that was designed originally, just in case we needed a third generator. I'm not against the wind turbines, but it takes, it's going to cost more to put wind turbines in than a generator.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's more, I'm just for the, for an understanding of the analogy to see which one is the, gives us the most ownership of our own direction versus anything being pushed down our throat.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good point too. You know, we're at a point now where we could, we have some choices, but the day is.
The day is coming, I mean, we don't have to make this decision in the next few years, but the day is coming when we're going to have to.
I'd like, I'd like you and your guys to, to begin to look at that.
Yeah. This, this peak time hasn't happened that many times to ever go that high when this is normally your peak, right?
Well, this was our previous height, it was 3.6 megawatt and that was a few years ago. And then all of a sudden, it got hot this summer and we got a little more load. Everybody had their air conditioner turned down to 60 apparently. And we just, like I said, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is. Going from 3.6 to 3.87, that is a lot of electricity.
So, I mean, speak out of turn, but one thing to keep in mind when we talk about generation, it's, if it's hot and you need it, you fire them up and you have it. And a wind turbine doesn't work that way. And actually, when it's really hot, that could correct me, but when it's really hot, lots of times the wind isn't blowing. So if it doesn't do any good, if SIPCO calls and tells us to run, or if we have blackout or hot.
I think you could, you'd have to spend some money, but I think you could probably store that wind energy in a fuel cell, but it's going to cost you some money to.
They have batteries now that you can store energy in, but they are, they're Tesla batteries. And where my son works, they have actually bought a couple of those Tesla batteries. They're something the size of a train car. And you're looking at, you're looking at millions and millions of dollars or something like that.
If we've never had this issue before as far as this MISO, why is federal coming down on us now? We don't even run the things that often.
Because they are, MISO is developed by the federal government and there's other places like this throughout the country.
MISO is kind of a regional.
Yes, it goes, it goes from Canada to the Gulf Coast, covers the whole Midwest. There's others that cover other parts of the country. But the reason for it is to try to prevent outages. I don't know. So say it was really hot out and somebody in Arkansas lost all their generation for whatever reason. Everybody else has to run to make up for it. Or say something happened to us, we had a blizzard and it got super cold out and we couldn't run our, our generation. Other places would run their generation to make up for that. It's a regional thing, so it's supposed to reduce outages. This is the federal government helping us.
Well, yeah.
Don't even start that. We're not in a debate here. I'm not going to talk about politics.
But at the center.
It really is.
I think, I think the, I think you, you also have to remember that when you begin to talk about energy production on that kind of scale, you know, where you're taking in a third of the country, that some of that infrastructure is not as good as ours. There's some, there's some pretty outdated infrastructure. Craig, you probably know more about that than anybody, but there's a lot of that infrastructure out there. So we're covering that infrastructure too, you know?
We are, because when we had to run last winter, it was because they had some generators in Louisiana that wouldn't run. And it, it sounds crazy, but we are, and we're not just covering them, we're putting power out on the grid for everybody to use to make up for that. And that's not just us, it's everybody that falls under this. Everybody's in the same situation, there's no getting away from it. And it's just the way the world works now.
Well, you know, those are, you know, when Brian and Craig met with their committee, you know, one of the things they pointed out is that we need to look for ways to increase our, our generation, you know, and increase our revenue because of that. I think the, it may, it may sound pie in the sky now, but one of the opportunities there is, is the electric vehicle outlets that we're going to eventually have to have out on the interstate. And that's coming quicker than I, than we want to think about. But that's, that's a way for us to increase revenue because I'm sure we're going to charge a pretty penny to those, to those companies out, out on the interstate who are selling that stuff. It's going to cost them money and, and I don't know why we couldn't, in McDonald Park up there, that's a city park, set up a half a dozen of those ourselves and people could go down there and, and buy power directly from us.
We'd have to everything enough.
You'd have to, you'd have to re-engineer a lot of that, everybody.
That's all part of what that electrical study has provided us is what we'd have to do for a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Part of that was, it wasn't just to make it so the south side was more fit for the new car generators. I mean, we're, we were looking at a new transformer for this side of town because when we hit our peak, I don't think this transformer is going to carry it by itself. We normally would use them together. But if something ever happened to our south transformer, the north one's not going to carry it.
It's a kind of.
It just isn't big enough anymore, that thing's 50 years old. And that, that's kind of what they DGR explained. They, they were telling us that we don't have, in case something goes wrong on the south substation, we don't have enough. On a day like today, it would have been fine. This, it's amazing how weather affects electricity and how much you use. Weather is the number one driving force toward that. And this kind of weather like today, yeah, we could have carried the whole town on our old transformer in the north substation. Back in August, when we were hitting over 100 degrees and we hit our new peak, no way. We would burn up the transformer.
That's going to go away pretty quickly, so. Not only the transformer, but you know, the opportunity for increased generation is out there too.
And here's, so here's my question. To get a new transformer, we're two years out.
Yeah.
And I know we kind of turned them down last month as far as getting started on their initial study because it was, and it was a lot of money. It was like the $35,000, trying to find a site and get a site ready. Do we want to revisit this or do we want to let it go? I mean, the only thing, it's going to get more expensive no matter what. They just raised the price of transformers again in September. I didn't think they could go any higher, but they did. And things are just getting, things are going crazy. I thought everything was going to be coming down by now in price, but certain things like transformers have actually gone up more.
Probably because there's so many storms and they're tearing them out and they got to build more. They're far two or three years out from building more.
That, that may be.
I won't get you. I do talk with my hands, sorry.
Talk about this new transformer, you know, and this, and the work to get it ready, maybe something we want to put in our budget for next year. Because we've got to begin to look at that, we can't.
You know, when a new substation transformer, we're going to pay a million dollars for.
We got to look at the fact that we just approved 50 new lots out there.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's not getting better.
So.
Load just keeps. Well, the 63 new lots that they're going to, they're working on now, that's all R and C.
That's all R and C.
So the all saints edition, that's ours and they got, I don't know, five lots left out there. But that added, every little bit adds to it. Everybody turns their air conditioner down to where they shouldn't. And, yeah. I'm guilty, I. But it's just one of those things, this problem is not going to go away with the electrical. And if you would like, I can have them come back and talk to us again next month. Or if you want to push it off until next year, that's fine too.
I don't think we can kick that can down there.
Because part of this project, part of this project, it wasn't just for that. Part of the project too, they were going to incorporate redoing some wire primary on the south side to try to make way for these car chargers. That was going to be like step three. And then I think step four included a new generator. They, they realize.
That was five years out, I think, on the plan, five or six.
Yeah.
And I know it's a lot.
It was 10 million over 10 years. It's a lot of money. But what else do you do? You got to be prepared to handle this kind of stuff and.
But, okay, any other discussion about that?
Do we want somebody to show up or not?
I, I would say so.
I will ask them to send somebody down and explain this to us again. If you think it's feasible.
Will that same company be able to speak about the wind turbine alternatives as well?
I, if we ask them to, I'm sure they can.
Okay, or bring another party in to the conversations to maybe do a side by side and figure out what the, you know, you know what I mean, the alternatives are?
And I can ask them to do that and I'm sure they can do that for us.
And then Ash, can you ask Chip to be a part of that at some level to understand the tax credits against the cost of, of that infrastructure improvement? So if it's a $2 million or $10 million cost with the tax credit, saleability is, if that's, you know, relevant or a large number?
Yeah, I'll watch Chip to attend the next meeting.
That's fine, it's just I, if, if they're both the same cost and you can get a third of your cost back because you've got tax credits that are redeemable by selling those to whoever, then, you know, it comes into play.
Yeah, yeah, that tax credit is a big subject. Yeah, we can get a chip and go with that stuff, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other on public forum, anybody else?
Oh, I think I said enough.
He's standing there.
Thank you.